Kathy, you're good? Good evening, I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council for the City of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, May 1st at 6:05 PM. City Clerk Flamson, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Here.
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Kraus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Here.
Mayor Canning?
Here. Please all stand and join for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. If you have not already done so, please silence or turn off your cellphones. We did have a closed session before this, starting at 5:00 PM. It was on a public employee performance evaluation under Government Code 54957 for the city manager. We will be continuing that after this meeting, since we have not concluded it. But Dylan is still sitting here, so that's a positive sign. Just as an FYI, there will also be a special session, closed session, after that this evening, on Conference of Real Property Negotiations, Government Code 54956.8. The property in question is 1435 North Oak Street, also known as the Fairgrounds. The agency negotiator is Dylan Nafik for the City of Calistoga, and Min Tran, who's the CEO for the County of Napa. Under negotiation and discussion is the price and/or terms for payment for potential purchase of property. As many of you know, we've already been involved in discussions with the county, and this is just a continuation of that discussion for council's consideration. Oral communication on consent items for non-agendized items, I'll open that now. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes, so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the council. I have two speaker cards, I'll start with that, and if there's anyone wishing to address the council on oral communication, make yourself known after that. The first one I have is from David Moon Wainwright. David, should you so choose, but you're not required to share with us your name, which I've done, and your address.
David Moon Wainwright, resident, 1210 Pine Street, Calistoga. I am deeply concerned about the Yellow Rose decision and what it reveals about the processes in our city. I missed the council notice, yet I had seen it, had I seen it. I may not have drilled down to understand what the agendized description meant, but I have watched the entire video of item number nine from your past meeting. City staff knew that the property was in play before the fires. It sounds, from Chris's introduction on the number nine, that he too had knowledge of it. Chris, you actually indicated that the developer had come into the city and asked what the city had wanted, and they were given direction that the city of Calistoga would like more housing. I am concerned because a developer just burned through cash and trust with the city and the city with that developer. Because will the people of this town trust that developer now that they've come in with a number that everyone felt was way out of line? I am concerned that you didn't proactively start a conversation on the property as soon as you were aware it was on the block. Why didn't we start talking about, is 46 parcels the right number? Or maybe we need to look at the general plan and reconsider this number? I am concerned that council agendas, while legally accurate, are opaque. I am concerned because there was no follow-up discussion at the last meeting, polling the council as to what number you might be comfortable with. We need housing. I cannot state it more clearly than that. We need housing for people who work at all levels of our community, but especially a particular subset. Spa managers, firefighters, housekeepers, police officers, teachers, vineyard workers, people who cannot afford to live here, need housing. Up to 1970, Calistoga was a small town of 882 people. Yet we more than doubled by 1980, and then increased in 1990 to 4,468. In 2000, we hit 5,190 and dropped back at 2010 a few. We still have open land in our community to build on.
Thirty seconds.
And it will be built out. The Ag Preserve will continue to create that pressure. To those who spoke last time, housing has been an issue here long before the Four Seasons or the Calistoga Hills started. How many teachers can afford to live here, or police officers, or firefighters? I have concerns, I hear concerns over the general plan, but much was done to shape the physical layout of the city, but I ask you today to look at the economic layout of our community. It is very difficult for any middle-class family to buy into Calistoga. And if this isn't addressed proactively, Calistoga will become more and more economically bifurcated. We need more housing for people who work here, for people...
Ten seconds, David.
...who want to serve the community. There are more open space properties, and this is going to continue on, and we need proactive leadership on this subject. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next I have Jean. Welcome. Share with us your address, should you so choose. Name and address.
Jean Hydery, 2412 Foothill Boulevard, Business Park.
Yes.
I have a couple of concerns. One is the two new wineries that are being proposed on Foothill. We've been told multiple times, there's no land available for affordable sliding-scale senior housing in Calistoga. There are two properties, 6 Foothill Boulevard and 108 Foothill Boulevard, that are currently being considered as sites for two more new wineries. The combined acreage of these two properties is 3.55 acres, more than enough for some decent senior housing. This land is zoned for rural residential, so why are these wineries even being considered for these properties? Secondly, is the, what's going to happen to the property where Calistoga towing is located? And it's being considered that the property where it's currently located be used for a mini-mart, car wash, restaurant, and gas station. Calistoga is only 2.6 square miles. Do we really need four gas stations? This intersection is already congested, adding these new facilities will only make it worse. The plan, as I read it, is to make a right turn only into the Arco Station. This would mean that anyone coming from anywhere but Petrified Road, Petrified Forest Road, won't even be able to get in there. This will very effectively reduce business for the already existing gas station and mini-mart, creating unfair competition. It has also been proposed that there will be, that there be no left turn from Petrified Forest onto Foothill. How are people who need to go that way supposed to get there? Drive downtown or into Rancho to turn around so they can make a right turn? This does not appear to have been thought out carefully enough. I've heard that this proposal has been shelved for the moment. Please leave it there and don't approve it. The Calistoga Inn and Brewery has been in operation here since 1933. The thanks they get is approval to start a competitive brewery at the other end of town, putting Puerto Vallarta out of business. Their lease expired, but could have been renewed. So much for any loyalty to long-term business owners here. When we bring up things that need to be taken care of, we're told there isn't enough money. New spas and wineries keep being approved. We're told the income is needed for repairs and maintenance throughout the city. Yet we've been waiting years for the promised traffic light at Foothill Petrified Forest Road. Our streets and sidewalks are hazardous and in dire need of repair, and our drinking water is admittedly contaminated. So where is all this income going? What we need is more action. What we're getting is charming smiles and empty promises. Calistoga as we know it is slowly and methodically being destroyed. Each additional resort, each additional tasting room, or shops used to be, chips away a little more, the charm of our city. When is enough enough? I have nothing against any of you personally, but I no longer believe that this council has the best interests of all of Calistoga at heart.
Thank you for your comments. I don't have any other speaker cards. Does anyone else wish to address the council? All right, I'll close oral communication, and I'll move on. Seeking a motion to adopt the agenda as presented unless a modification is requested.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Councilmember Barnes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
All I can say is today is that when people had a concern, and when they had a question, please come to us, come to this, that's why these meetings are for. It's not to hear the rumors, to spread rumors, because they create division in our community, and we don't need that. We have to work together for the benefit of the whole community. So please don't listen to rumors, as I say, come and ask the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barnes?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Kraus?
Yes, I'd like to thank Dylan for getting the various political campaigns that were putting up signs that weren't in conformance with our ordinance. And the, for the most part, you've been very successful, and I recently communicated with the city manager about one particular location, and I understand that the taking care of by the property owner, perhaps very soon. So, thank you very much for getting hold of that. Thank you to the campaigns, the Yes On See, the Perez Campaign, you know, all of them for promptly complying with that request. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
I would like to echo the comments from Councilmember Lopez, and just encourage people in the community, in the public, who have concerns about a specific issue, to make the effort to come and speak to any one of us. We're always available. We're happy to talk about any subject, and it's true, so oftentimes, there are just rumors, and people think or believe them to be true, or just don't really have all the information. And I just think it would help dispel a lot of those if people would have more conversations with us. I'm actually surprised how few people actually approach me when they have concerns about any issue. It's kind of surprising, so.
Thank you. Couple of comments I want to thank Public Works for the improvements that they've made to the Lake Street, right in front of the high school. That is a vast improvement, and we anxiously await and look forward to the second part of Lake Street being completed. Also want to remind the public, because we are still getting questions, the chip ceiling that was started before the new year, or actually right before the fires, that is not completed. That is scheduled to be completed in the next several weeks, Mike, next several weeks. So, the chippy, bumpy surface you see out there is not the finished product. Just a comment that we do have a movie filming this Friday in Calistoga by Netflix Productions called Wine Country. The city, The Chamber, and Netflix have been working together extensively to mitigate and minimize the impact this will have on the downtown, and we have dramatically reduced the amount of downtown or of Lincoln Avenue that will be closed, and for what periods of time, as well as dramatically reduced the restrictions to parking. And Netflix continues to work with the businesses along Lincoln Avenue. Yes, there will be some minor inconveniences, but it is no longer a three-day shoot, it is a one-day shoot on Friday. So please pay attention for that. I did mention the closed session item, which will be after this, regarding the Fairgrounds discussions. We will report out on that the next city council meeting, if there is anything to report to the two papers. And want to reiterate, Councilmember Lopez Ortega and Vice Mayor Dunsford, there is a tremendous amount of activity online on something called Nextdoor.com, of which I am not a subscriber. I strongly encourage people to step out from behind their keyboards, out from behind the shadows. We're all very approachable people. We're logical, we're reasonable, we're your neighbors, we live here, we work here. If there's something you hear communicated on one of those often useful, sometimes not, platforms, and it doesn't feel right or sound right to you, please call us. You have our email addresses. Clearly, you're capable of using the internet. You have our cellphone numbers. We're seeing a greater number of these spiraling conversations that is wasted energy. We're here to serve you. We're here to represent you, we're here to talk to you, we're here to listen to you. But we can't, you hear us say this often, we can't fix something if we don't know it's broken. I sincerely appreciate the comments by Ms. Hydery tonight. I for one will be getting back to you and talking to you about some of the topics you've raised. We're always open. I went to someone's home last night who had some concerns about a bunch of things they read. By the end of it, it seemed they were in a better place and a clearer understanding. We may not have the answer you like, but we'll give you an answer based on what we know at that moment in time. So with that, I say thank you. And for those of you who have friends who are on those platforms and that is their only source of information, encourage them, push the keyboard aside, come out, read the paper, come say hello to someone. And for this, I know, for those at home watching, I will be bashed on Nextdoor.com, but that's okay, because I don't subscribe. With that said, we will move on to the city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple items. One, we're preparing for a, to offer bonds for our debt refinancing next Monday and next Tuesday, which for me is kind of exciting, because that's where we see how much money we're going to save when we do this. We did recently get an A rating, which was the stable rating, which is a very good thing for us. It was the longest phone call that the S&amp;P rating agents have had on a rating, but they were very pleased with the efforts we've taken through our rate study, the demonstrated, you know, management activities we have related to our enterprise funds. And so we're really optimistic, and I'm excited to refinance some debt, which will take place next week. And as soon as the time is right to bring back the actual approval of selling those bonds, all the formal documents, we'll bring that back to city council, be able to have specific numbers. One of the things we've been working on, Kathy specifically, is our new online agenda management software, iCompass. So as we continue planning efforts to reduce the amount of paper produced, make our council meeting agendas, planning commission agendas, much easier, simpler. You can take notes, store things on your tablet. We're looking forward to trying to make the process a little bit easier, and also less cumbersome for staff. And then the last thing I just speak to about development projects, one thing was mentioned earlier about, you know, when the city was aware of a Yellow Rose proposal. I'll be very candid and open, very, very frequently, property owners, prospective property owners, people wanting to purchase land, contact the city and speak to us about, what can I do here? It's good, smart due diligence for anyone to do as part of a project. With Yellow Rose, it's been identified as a housing opportunity site for many years. And part of the longstanding discussions for a year have been, if you want to do a denser project, there's general plan amendments, zoning amendments, there's a process you have to go through. And the meeting, the last council meeting, was that first step in the formal process. There have been many meetings, discussions, and just like, you know, other potential projects, those come to city, we provide input, feedback. Once they actually get submitted, we go through a review process. We do an environmental review, we do traffic studies, we identify what the impacts are going to be. And every property owner in Calistoga, every prospective owner in Calistoga, has a right to develop their property. In some cases, we have existing businesses where they want to change the use inside the building. We don't have any ability to control that. That becomes a property owner and a tenant issue. It's unfortunate in some cases, but there's, that's outside the control and the ability of the city to do anything. So I just, you know, I understand, I'm sympathetic to the concerns, but from the city's, from an, as an organization perspective, you know, I want anyone to know, if you come into the city and you want to develop your property, you want to build a fence, you want to do anything, you're going to be giving respect. We're going to review, we're going to provide comments, we're going to provide feedback, and we're going to be critical. We're going to make sure and identify what the impacts are, so that when that comes back to city council, or the planning commission, or if it's done at the department level, that we've, we're building in the community the way we want to build. We're conforming to the general plan, we're conforming to our zoning rules. And I just want to make that clear, and as you said earlier, whether you have questions to the city council members or questions to staff, please feel free to come ask anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to proclamations, presentations, and awards, and we have several, so first we will honor May's Mental Health Awareness Month proclamation. If you are receiving a proclamation today, while I'm reading it, if you can approach the podium, and at the conclusion of the proclamation, I will present you with it. City of Calistoga proclamation, Mental Health Month 2018. Whereas one in four individuals will experience mental health issues in their lifetimes, which can affect parents, sisters, brothers, spouses, coworkers, and others in our lives. And whereas it is essential to eliminate disparities in mental health by promoting well-being for all, regardless of race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender identity, language, place of residence, or age, and ensure equity of access, delivery of services, and improvement of outcomes. And whereas the Napa County Health Human Services Mental Health Division seeks to reduce barriers to access, improve community outreach, and engagement that ensures culturally and linguistically competent care of diverse communities through culturally competent services and policies. And whereas while there is still much work to be done to eliminate disparities in services and increase education about mental illness, Napa County service providers are to be commended for their collaborative approach when working with individuals in need. And whereas a holistic approach to services which include prevention and early intervention is an effective way to meet the needs of individuals at risk of developing mental health issues, individuals who are experiencing early onset of the symptoms of mental illness, or individuals with serious mental illness to severe emotional disturbance. And whereas there is a strong body of research documenting that with support and treatment between 70% and 90% of individuals with mental illness have a significant reduction in symptoms and improved quality of life. And whereas every Napa County resident can be an ally by learning about and dispelling the myths related to mental illness and eliminating stigma by treating individuals with mental illness with respect. Now therefore, I, Chris Canning, Mayor of the City of Calistoga, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Mental Health Month in Calistoga, and call upon its citizens and recommit, to recommit to increasing in awareness and understanding of mental health, and to promote appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Thank you. Please introduce yourself and the organization you represent.
I am Eduardo Rivera, and I am here with LGBTQ Connection. I wanted to first thank you all for doing this proclamation. Part of LGBTQ Connection's work is doing family acceptance work, which is funded by the Napa County Health and Human Services Division. So yeah, I, we are an organization that's fairly new to Calistoga. We run support groups, and we also run youth leadership teams. And part of our work too is, you know, providing space for youth to be able to talk about their mental health. Currently, LGBTQ youth that are rejected in their homes face a time likelihood of attempting suicide, six times are likely to face higher levels of depression, three times are likely to use illicit drugs, three times are likely to be at risk for HIV and STIs. And so what we're doing here in Calistoga is creating community and creating a space for youth to come and to find support. A lot of our youth that are in our youth leadership teams and that come to our support groups are seeking that community. And so I have here one of my youth who would like to share why mental health is important to us.
Thank you.
Testing, testing, one, two, three. Can everyone hear me? My name is Sophia Winslow, and I am part of the youth leadership team that Eduardo talked about for LGBTQ Connection. And mental health awareness is very important, especially to the LGBTQ youth group, but to youth in general, because today's youth face a lot more of these mental health issues than it seemed, than youth before us seem to face. And the most important thing about this is awareness, is just knowing, is having the knowledge, because once you have the knowledge, you can work with those youth, and with youth close to you, with LGBTQ youth close to you, to help them, and so that they can eventually help each other, and so that they can get to a better place in their life. And that's why being aware is so important in today's society, and to the LGBTQ connection, and to all youth in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia.
Good evening. I'm Bobby Moffett. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist, and I work in the Napa County Mental Health Access Division, Unit. And my job is to assess people for mental health. So I'm thinking tonight, what would I like to say to a group of aware people about, that hasn't already been said about mental health and fighting stigma? And I guess what I would like to say is, show up. If you need help, ask for it. If you have a friend who needs help, encourage them to benefit from it. The other thing that I think about is, just yesterday, I went to my dentist's office. That's dental health. I can say that very openly. I can say I went for a cleaning, I'm going to get a filling. Who knows, I may end up with a crown someday. I can say that in public. Mental health, we're not there yet. Can I actually, can people actually openly say, in public, at a wedding reception, that I'm going to Napa County Mental Health Access for an assessment because I'm feeling depressed? Or do we still fight that stigma? So I would like to encourage everybody in the room to think about that, encourage anyone who needs help to get it. We're here, we have a lot of tools in our toolbox, and we do want to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the work you do, and thank you for being here this evening. We're going to, is Jaime indisposed for a little bit?
Uh, he will be on.
Okay, I'll move on to the next one. National Travel and Tourism Week. Kathy, you'll be firing that up while I read. That's okay. May 6th to the 12th, 2018. Whereas the city of Calistoga has been a travel destination since the 1860s, when Sam Brandon opened his Hot Springs Hotel, and visitors would enjoy the summer months relaxing and enjoying the volcanic hot springs. And whereas today, the travel industry continues to have a positive effect on Calistoga and Napa County's economic prosperity and image abroad, as well as business productivity, individual travelers' well-being. And whereas in 2016, visitor spending on lodging generated $5.7 million in tax revenue for the city of Calistoga, approximately 47% of the city's budget. And whereas in 2016, travelers' spending...
And whereas in 2016, travelers' spending in Napa County generated $1.9 billion in economic output, which supported over 13,000 jobs and generated tax revenue of $80.4 million for county and local governments, fund, funds used, funds used to support essential services and programs for our communities. And whereas travelers in 2016, spending in California generated $126.3 billion in economic output, supporting 1.1 million jobs and contributing tax revenues of $10.3 billion for state and local governments, funds used to support essential services and programs. Whereas leisure travel, which accounts for more than three-quarters of all trips taken in the United States, spurs countless benefits to travelers' health and wellness, creativity, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, and relationships. And whereas it is the hard work, the hardworking people employed in the tourism and hospitality industry who, through superior customer service and comfort to guests, are the core of this industry and its success. We recognize the industry's support of the community during the fire evacuation and recovery, extending world-renowned hospitality to our citizens. Now therefore, I Chris Canning, Mayor of the City of Calistoga, do hereby proclaim the week of May 6th through the 12th as National Travel and Tourism Week in Calistoga, and urge the citizens of Napa County to join me in this special observance. And Catherine Haywood, anything you'd like to share? Please introduce your, introduce yourself and the organization you represent.
I'm Catherine Haywood, and I'm with Visit Napa Valley. And I'm going to show a short, three-minute video that's part of our Tourism Matters campaign. We're celebrating National Travel and Tourism Week throughout the county. This is the 35th year that it's been nationally recognized by U.S. Travel. It's also supported by San Francisco Travel, Visit California, and DMOs throughout the nation. So I'm going to share with you a video, it's testimonials of employees in the industry.
A lot of my family works in the wine industry, so I worked here my whole life. And we continue to help each other out, and we continue to recommend one another. It's helped people for all, without monies and hotels and restaurants. I don't think there'd be a lot of job opportunities, or you'd be very limited to what jobs can be offered. I love my job. I've been there for 34 years. I do everything when my heart is open. Without the guests, we would have nothing. We'd be without jobs.
I used to just be wine, now there's sort of a lot more to do. Also, tourism is responsible for all this. You get your tax money from that, and really, there's not much to go back to. I can't really take it. It's better for everyone. We all go down to contractors, and people aren't, home values go up. All of that stuff is dependent on our economy, and all of our economy is really dependent mostly on tourism.
There's a lot more we can do for Napa. You know, I talk to other mayors, and they go, Jill, I want what you have. You know, you have the beautiful vistas, you have great hotels, you have great restaurants, you have people that come and go and leave the TOT tax behind so that you can afford things for your community. You know, that funding helps us pay for, for streets and parks and police and fire. It enriches us.
I've been in the restaurant business since I was 13. I'm on repeat business. I want someone new coming in going, we're going to tell all of our friends that's the place to be. And I hear that a lot.
You know, we rely a lot on people coming to the valley and supporting our valley financially. We all love looking for our hotel, and we want to make it better. We have over 15 employees that have been there for 10 years, from, you know, the housekeepers to the front desk staff, to the concierge, to the sales departments. You speak to a lot of people in this town, and nine times out of 10, somebody is going to be working at a restaurant, or a winery, or a hotel.
People need to pay bills. There's no tourism, we're going to struggle here. People want to see Napa Valley for what it produces, great food, great wine. We need people to come in here, and we need to retain that relationship so people want to come back and learn more about our community, culture, the future for Napa Valley, literally.
Anything else you'd like to add, Catherine?
I'll just note that Tuesday is actually a travel rally day, is what we're calling it, and several properties throughout Napa County are celebrating their employees with special recognition ceremonies, meals, gestures of that sort. And we are very, very pleased that you will be joining us in Napa. The meritage to thank some employees down there for their hospitality of many citizens from, from Calistoga that were back.
All right, next we have Municipal Clerks Week. May is the month of everything, right Kathy? All right, municipal, the City of Calistoga proclamation, Municipal Clerks Week, May 6th through the 12th. Whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is a time-honored and vital part of local government that exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I Chris Canning, Mayor of the City of Calistoga, do hereby proclaim the week of May 6th through the 12th, 2018, as Municipal Clerks Week in Calistoga, and encourage all citizens to join me in this worthy observation. Kathy, am I meeting you at the podium, or at your? Do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
Thank you for this honor, and we're worth it, darn it. It is my major award.
Well, not only do we appreciate municipal clerks in general, we certainly appreciate our municipal clerk. Thank you very much Kathy for all of your service. City of Calistoga proclamation, National Police Week. Here a different week, so it's okay. May 12th through the 18th. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and the, I know, and it was, it was Latin, and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas law enforcement officers are our guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual right to be free, warriors in the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas the City of Calistoga desires to honor the service and dedication of its own police officers for all that they have given to the citizens of this city. And whereas this year marks over 35 years of celebration of National Police Week. Now therefore, I Chris Canning, Mayor of the City of Calistoga, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th to the 18th, 2018, as National Police Week in Calistoga, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Now further, I call upon the citizens of Calistoga to express their thanks to the men and women of Calistoga's Police Department for making it possible for us to leave our homes knowing they are protected by brave men and women willing to sacrifice their lives if necessary, to guard our loved ones, property, and government against all who would violate the law. Signed, Chris Canning, Mayor of the City of Calistoga. Matt, will you have anything to say?
Thank you, Mayor. Sergeant Matt Fries, Calistoga Police Department, City Council. I'd just like, I'd be happy to accept this on behalf of the Police Department, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And a special thank you, Matt, to you and the entire department. I'm the brother of a police officer for 19 years, so I know it's not only difficult on you as individuals, but also on your families, so thanks to your families for that as well. And, and I've said before, we do not have a good police department for a small town. We have a good police department, full stop, period. And I would put them against any other city anywhere around, so thank you for your service. Jaime, are you back in the room? I can't see at a distance with these glasses. City of Calistoga proclamation, International Firefighters' Day. Wow, the police get a whole week, you get a day. Whereas there are over 1 million firefighters serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Calistoga Fire Department. And whereas firefighters dedicate their lives to the protection of life and property by risking the ultimate sacrifice of a firefighter's life. And whereas Calistoga firefighters contribute countless hours of training and education to protect nearly 7,000 Calistoga residents, that's inside and outside of the city limits, as well as participating in mutual aid assignments throughout the state of California. And whereas the Calistoga firefighters spread public safety through fire prevention, fire investigation, and education programs within the community. They strive to educate school-aged children on the importance of fire education and prevention with multiple presentations to Calistoga schools. And whereas International Firefighters' Day is a time where the world's community, communities can recognize and honor the sacrifices that firefighters make to ensure that their communities and environments are as safe as possible. Whereas the City of Calistoga honors its men and women for the dedication, service, and sacrifices they have given to the citizens of Calistoga. And now therefore, I Chris Canning, Mayor of the City of Calistoga, do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2018, as International Firefighters' Day in Calistoga, and publicly salute the service of firefighters in our community and in communities across the nation and around the world. Thank you very much. Do you have anything you'd like to share?
I just want to say thank you to the city, the city council, and the citizens for the continued support on behalf of the whole department. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I know the rules, I'm not gonna be the only one buying ice cream. Somebody told me that one, so now you're all gonna pay. Have you explained that rule? Just so everyone at home knows what we're talking about.
Yes, so we have a rule, a written rule in the fire service, that if you make the news or newspaper, any pictures in public, the person has to buy ice cream, so. I've been on the hook a couple times, so I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Jaime, you mean to tell us you buy an ice cream for everybody here?
Sure, on Dylan's bike. Thank you.
Well, thank you guys as well. We appreciate it. Stay safe. All right, moving on to the consent calendar, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented, and necessarily, any modifications or withdrawals are requested.
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself from items eight and nine, as I live too close to those subdivision improvement districts to make a vote on that, although I'm not subject to those.
Understood. Anyone else?
I just moved to in the mirror on this.
So eight and nine as well?
Eight and nine, so I had to recuse myself.
All right, I will entertain a motion to move on items number six, seven, 10, and 11.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, Barnes, a second by Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I will now entertain a motion to move on items number eight and nine with the recusal of Councilmember Kraus and Lopez Ortega.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Barnes, second by Vice Mayor Dunstford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and Kathy, you'll note the two recusals. Thank you very much. We are now moving on. There are no public hearings this evening. We do have one item under general government, number 12. Consideration of a resolution authorizing a public works contract with Heavenly Greens in amount of $115,814 for installation of artificial lawn at Pioneer Park, authorizing a budget adjustment in the amount of $115,814, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract. The recommended action this evening is to adopt the resolution as presented. Taking us through this item will be City Manager Feek. Dylan, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the first things I'd like to point out in the printed agenda, if council looks under the issue, consider resolution, that, item number two, there's a typo. It actually lists 155,814. That's a typo, it should be 115,814, which is consistent with all the other language.
So noted.
The, as council is aware, last year, Friends of Pioneer Park completed a project with, which included installation of new sod, as well as planar areas and miscellaneous improvements at Pioneer Park. At the time that it was installed, it was given several weeks and months, actually, to allow the sod to take, to establish in the area, the park, which has significantly tall redwood trees in the area, also has a lot of pedestrian traffic, concerts in the park, just passersby using the park playground area. Once the Friends of Pioneer Park, their contractor that they used, which was North Bay Landscape, determined that the park was acceptable to use, we started concerts in the park series, whether it was people putting blankets out on there, on the, on the grass, having a hot summer, we're constantly working, you know, putting water on the property, and just consistently seeing the increased use at the park, the, the new sod took a beating. And it was really difficult, if not impossible, for North Bay Landscape, as well as our own city staff, to do any kind of maintenance. And we really weren't doing the maintenance, it was North Bay Landscape. We had a lot of discussions since then, talking about what's the best long-term approach for this, you know, short of cutting down the trees, opening up the area, and requiring people not to place blankets, chairs, and really use that park. One of the, the options that council could consider is installation of artificial lawn. The area that, what I've, what I've reached out to a group called Heavenly Greens, as well as other sod installation contractors, is what's out there, what are the, the issues with it, what should we be doing to make sure we're preserving the, the new artificial lawn, and making sure that it is a good usable lawn for years to come, kind of warranties are provided? But additionally, what can we locate that will reduce the amount of water consumption on site and be usable? We want to see people using the park. We want people to enjoy the park. Concerts in the park at one time, you know, may have had far fewer numbers than it does now, and we want people to be socializing with neighbors and enjoying music, you know, and whatever other events we have, from wine tasting events to off-season, non-peak events. We expect there'll be continued foot traffic in anticipation of installation of the pedestrian bridge, future site improvements here at the Sharpstein Plaza. We only expect that Pioneer Park will see more and more traffic, pedestrian traffic, and use in the years ahead. So as I reached out to multiple companies, Heavenly Greens has done various projects here, Solage was a recent project they did. I'm just going to forward real quick. These are actually pictures I took today. I will note that the mayor asked me to pose on the artificial lawn.
To show how comfortable it is?
To show how comfortable it was. I did not feel.
But you didn't want to have to pay with ice cream.
Exactly, and I did not want people to see me sprawled out on the grass. It actually looks and feels quite real. I was, it was very, you know, if I can throw his name out, to speak with Joe Ogde about it, this was a no-brainer to them. It reduced the amount of water use that they, that they have. It's sitting right next to one of their areas where they see in dining guests, and it looks and feels real. There are different shades of grass we can select. There, there's maintenance, which we will do to it, you know, you have to have a, it looks like a push broom, that you go and you collect all the, the leaves and debris that fall on the grass. You can also use a leaf blower and just blow stuff right off. It does have sand in it, it is very, it doesn't get as hot as one might think, it's very pet-friendly. It's very pet-friendly. And they do have, it does allow for filtration to happen through the artificial lawn, through the sand, and all the subsurface materials they put in.
And Dylan, I believe this is their event lawn, so there's tents and parties and chairs and tables, high-frequency use.
Correct, correct. One of the things that we would want to consider if we were installing this at Pioneer Park is do we want to allow for tents and things that can be staked into the ground? I'd recommend that if we were going to allow tenting and other placements of various things out of the park, you know, they just have to weight it down rather than drive stakes through the artificial lawn. The area that we're talking about is essentially all the prime green area in front of the gazebo and the sitting area where people enjoy it for concerts in the park. So, looking, I think that's okay. It's just this one. I can't really see the red laser from here when I point because of the white background on the screen. But you all know the park. It's the green area in front of the gazebo that's surrounded by the sidewalk areas. And then the several small areas down along Cedar Street where, I just can see it on the white. So, it's approximately 8,800 square feet that they would be installing. You can see the scope of work that's defined here in the proposal. We've been very clear that if the council wants to proceed with this, we have upcoming events this summer. We're not too far away from people requesting rentals of the park, where they can do their own special events, weddings, had a few of those with the use of the gazebo. So, we expect them to be able to come in and very quickly be able to, you know, remove what they need to remove, install the artificial lawn, and do it in a manner where it's ready for use on June, by June 14th, which is our first concert-in-the-park event. The cost to do this is, they've provided a cost for $115,814. They've included an eight-year warranty on this. The total cost includes what they call gopher wire. They'll preserve rodents and critters from getting underneath the artificial lawn. Also, they're nailing, they install what's called a nailer board, which is essentially a way to anchor the sod to the surrounding sidewalks so that it can't be kicked up and trashed by people who are using it. It's just a way to ensure that it lasts longer and is preserved longer for all the use it's gonna get. We have requested Friends of Pioneer Park, which does have remaining funds available for the park, to contribute $35,000 for the cost of this. They're having a board meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m., and I'm very optimistic and confident that they'll be, that they will contribute the $35,000. Another source of funds the City Council could consider is when we approved a settlement agreement with WMB Contractors for the Monhoff Center that included a $40,000 settlement related to liquidated damages. Council had directed me to identify a way we can put that money to good use. Didn't really clarify if that was at Monhoff, if that was somewhere else, but that's $40,000 that we weren't planning on we could use for a project like this. And then the difference would be something that the city could pay out of its own capital improvement program budget. I think the concern we have as city staff is down the road, you know, to care and maintain that lawn, I think will be different than caring and maintaining the Logview Park lawn. The, you know, an opportunity to try something that requires far less water and can be used by a lot of people, far more people than we see at a Logview Park. I think it's worth council consideration. I do think there's some concern from people about removing real lawn and putting in artificial lawn. Quite candidly, it's hard to tell in some ways that it's artificial lawn. Even when you're getting down on your hands and knees and playing with it, I was very impressed just today observing the same product at Solage. So, asking for council deliberation, discussion, direction on this. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Mike is in the room as well, our Public Works Director. And, or if you'd like to give us further direction, let us know. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Manager Feek. Councilmembers, questions? If I may, it is a very, and Mike, please correct me if I go astray here. This is a very difficult piece of property to keep grass on. Despite many, many efforts, one of the solutions that Dylan did mention that was proposed by a landscaper I spoke to is, well, you could remove the trees so that more sunlight could get to the grass. But I don't consider that a viable solution in Calistoga and in that park because you eliminate your shading and, quite candidly, the charm of that park. It does create operational issues to have the mud that ends up happening throughout the course of the year. It is a revenue source for the city because it is rented out for weddings, parties, et cetera. So, I know that that's one of the facilities that we do use to generate revenue. So, it's, needs to be, in my opinion, in better condition. Anyone else? Mr. Barnes?
I have some concerns. I'm kind of upset that we are being asked to approve something tonight that I have never seen. I don't know if any of you, you have, you have. I don't know if the other three council members have seen this product. I would have liked a little more notice to maybe go over to Solage myself, if I could've. I walked the park this afternoon, and it is in very bad shape. But I don't know if it is because of the sunlight, the trees, or a bad installation job last year. You can still see the outline of where those blocks of sod were laid 14 or 15 months ago. You can see the lines of the blocks of sod where they enrolled them. Other areas of the park, and these were, there was full sunshine when I was over there at about 3:00 o'clock. You can still see the nylon webbing that holds the blocks of sod together poking up through the grass. I think, from just my observation, and I know nothing about sod or the installation of sod, that this perhaps was a very shoddy workmanship last year. I don't know anything about the company that did it either. I could be way off base. But there's other questions, I think, that should be answered. We're being put under a very strict timeframe, six weeks before the first concert. And I don't know how long this is gonna take to put in, and I don't know how much that sod cost last year. I have been told that even artificial turf needs to be watered. If we are going to water, right now, we're using regular city water, which we have done in the past for the grass, that's not a problem. But when we convert to recycled water, which we will do after that bridge is put across there and the pipeline is run, will that have a deleterious effect on this artificial surf? Turf? And do we really need to water it? Dylan spoke about cleaning it with a broom or a broom-like device or a blower. I don't know how that works either. What about the heat of the turf, the artificial turf? I've seen some that you can't put your hand on it in the middle of a summer day. You've got babies out there at night running around, 18-month-old, two-year-old kids with bare feet. A lot of people bring their dogs. Dogs can get sore feet too, and they can get sunburned. I noticed on page 13, there's a list of recipients and owners of this grass that Heavenly Greens has put in. There is not one park on that list of references. Not one.
Dog Park in San Jose.
Okay, Dog Park in San Jose. But it's not a people park where people go to sit and listen to music, have picnics, have weddings. There's not one of those in there. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions, and I think I certainly don't have enough information to make an informed decision tonight. It seems to me, remembering years ago, four or five years ago, when it was just the park with regular grass, the drought occurred. The grasshoppers seemed to be okay to me. Then the drought occurred. We couldn't water it. We went to chips. That was not a good idea, but was an idea we had to use because we had no alternatives. And then last year, this sod that never did take. Now, I don't know if it was the fault of the weather, the installation, or the product. But I think those questions need to be answered before we spend $115,000 on artificial turf. When I have three of the council, other council members, or four of the other council members have never seen it, felt on it, or laid on it, I would have really appreciated a little more time to look into this.
I just have a comment as Jim spoke. I recall that a number of high schools replaced natural turf with an artificial turf, and there were some health issues that surrounded that. I believe there was one of the locations was down in Napa. Another one was over in Marin County. And, you know, it was all rage because of the water issue and the maintenance issue and like that. But there was some question as to bacterial buildup, or I'm not sure exactly what it was, but as Jim spoke, I remember some of the...
The issue was, so that turf style, they use black rubber pellets.
Little rubber pellets, yes. They recycle tires, weren't they?
They recycle tires. And so, I think it was, you know, kids kind of inhaling, or like if you're getting tackled or something, you're, you know, you're getting that. But this product, anyway, is sand-based.
Anyway, I just, like I said, Jim was mentioning, and I just want to make sure that there isn't some kind of issue there.
And didn't a lot of the people with, or facilities that put this in, took them out again and replaced them with grass? They found them, they were unsatisfactory?
That was a...
I think there's...
That may have been some of the first iterations of artificial turf.
There's a couple of different issues. The technology definitely has changed dramatically.
I'm sure it has, yeah.
And so, initially turf, they didn't quite have the cushion, so you had injuries because it was basically astroturf was the term.
Concrete with green stuff on it.
Exactly. And then, there was the rubber pellets, which made it more softer, but there were other issues. But there were still also injury issues. That's why, for athletes, when you're making a sharp cut on your joints and your knees, as opposed to just natural sod where there's more forgiveness. So, it's more injury-type stuff. Obviously, this use is very different application. And just regarding your comment about children, I mean, a number of these are daycare centers, which I would guess that their kids are actually, you have Boys and Girls Club, you have the Google Daycare Center.
Well, they don't say what they use.
San Francisco Giants. I mean, I'm just taking a stab at it. My guess is they have outdoor grass areas where kids are playing. I mean, I've seen it at the Giants Stadium, you know, same thing. Personally, I don't have, I don't think there's an issue like for kids or any of that. I think my bottom-line issue is I do question whether it was just a bad installation. It would be nice to know, have more information about that, maybe from a couple of different installers of natural sod. My issue is just the premise of Calistoga keeping things organic and authentic and not sort of going the artificial route. I think we could get a lot of, got a backlash about that, you know? But at the same time, if it's, if we can't grow grass, you know, what do we do? And it is a highly, highly-used, you know, asset to the town. So, and I have seen the product at Solage, which is, it's really hard to tell. It looks great.
You have seen it.
Yeah. I mean, we do the, some of the events out there, they do some events out there. It's, I mean, it'd be helpful if everybody had a chance to see it, for sure. Because I think you'd be surprised at the quality of the product. And they've had it there for several years, I'm sure, at least. So, I don't know.
Dylan has seen it, you've seen it, Gary, have you seen it?
I have not.
And I'm also thinking...
I know of the Solage and some other parts in Santa Rosa and nursing facility, they have that.
And I'm just thinking, you know, are we gonna go another summer? Like, obviously, we have to make a game-time decision here to get it installed by, you know, maybe we can just delay it a week or something, or a couple of weeks until we...
How many, we have, what, six weeks before the first concert? Is that June 26th?
Correct. What I would propose, yeah, what I would propose, because the questions you've raised are very fair, let's move this, continue this discussion to the next agenda. In the interim, Dylan, if you could, the space where it is at Solage, and we keep referencing Solage because it's the closest place that has it, right here in town. It's part of their public space. You can go over and take a look. And I would suggest that if any, I would suggest council members go over, take a look at it. Dylan can put you in contact with his contact, who can kind of walk you through it. The Solage product I know is actually, is, within the last year, Calistoga Ranch has been multiple years, and that's why they moved it, put the same product here. And then in the interim, Dylan, I'd say, let's get these questions raised primarily by Councilmember Barnes answered. If, you know, it's great that they have a list of places, but let's say, at the daycares, is it child contact?
Yeah, just the front lawn or the...
Fair questions. Anyone in the public wish to address this matter? Mike Kern, are we forgetting anything? Please. Is this where you rein reality on our parade?
Are we analyzing wrongly? Am I analyzing wrongly?
So, I don't think that there was anything wrong with the installation of the sod. I think one of the things that I've observed is just the uptick in intensification of the use of the park. And it is, I mean, it's every week, you know, you've got 300, 400 people out there or more.
Five to 1,200.
Previously, you know, to the, the increase in foot traffic, you know, I think you'd be hard-pressed to have 100 people out there. So, that's one component of how, why it didn't perform like everybody expected it to. I've talked to Tim from staff, and he thinks it's a good idea because it is very challenging to get something to grow in those shady conditions and expect it to be able to recover after, you know, a week, every week. The placement of blankets and chairs and stuff like that, a lot of people will try and reserve their space at 10:00 in the morning. That basically creates a thermal inversion layer right at the base of the grass, and it cooks it. So, those are my comments there. If your council will remember, you have other, another council meeting on May 10th where you're going to be talking about the budget. So, timeliness is, I think, important because the vendor will need to get in there and do his work as quickly as possible. So, if we can short, I won't say to short-change the process, but truncate the window of time before you reconsider this, I think that might be something you'd want to think about.
I forgot about the May 10th meeting.
Yeah, we could put that right on the agenda.
One other item I'd add is when the Friends of Pioneer Park meets tomorrow, we'll be able to have confirmation on contribution from them as well.
Okay.
Yeah, to me, this is not a money thing. It's a safety thing and an aesthetic thing.
Completely fair request, I agree. So, we'll move this to the May 10th agenda, and we'll leave it to the responsibility of the individual council members to go visit some turf. In the interim, if you can find exact uses, Dylan, in this list, and we'll go from there.
Could we perhaps get a chunk of it and have it here on display for the next meeting? Or bring it to the 10th, May 10th meeting?
The May 10th meeting is actually at the firehouse, correct?
And then have it there and have a square foot of it so people can see what it's like.
I might have to go cut a section at Solage during the dark of night.
Yeah, they'd love that a lot.
You just admitted to some vandalism right on TV. All right, thank you very much. With that said, any further discussions? I will adjourn this meeting to our next special meeting, which will be the 10th of May, Budget Study Session at the Fire Department at, what time? Noon, at the firehouse. And this will be one of the agenda items. Thank you very much. I'll adjourn the regularly scheduled meeting. We'll go back into our closed session after a brief break for evaluation. Yep?
Yes, please.